Oh, that's good. Yeah, good to go.
Okay, welcome back to the public session, everybody. So we've thoroughly gone through and asked all of our questions on the fantasies in the main report. Does anybody have any debate? councillor Leon.
Thank you, Chair. You see, we've had a really interesting discussion this evening. I think it's been really worthwhile to have this meeting. I think many of us understand much more clearly the points around the covenants and the purpose. And I think we're all grateful to Mr Hutchins for taking us through that several times, I think. But I think it's embedded now. But I think the reason we're here, and the discussion has illustrated this, that there are considerable challenges in approaching the regeneration of this site. Both the previous administration and this one have both worked around direct public engagement on it. I think it's because the complexities, constraints and financial challenges mean that an open, public discussion process risks raising expectations that are far beyond anything that can be achieved here. And so we find ourselves looking for a structure. And I don't think we've quite landed it this evening on how we will manage that public engagement. And whilst it will fall to the university, I think we do still have an obligation there. We've got to find a way of doing that. I don't think, as I've expressed earlier, that it's a repetition of the SPD process. I think we've got to be innovative in how we do this. So, and look at ways forward. So I've suggested, you know, we want to avoid anything that sounds like a plebiscite on this, but we want to engage people actively. And I think some sort of deliberative process that brings in people from across the city and across the district into that discussion is important. And I hope that we can bring something forward in that area. Personally, I will just be sure that we can hold the University of Southampton to its zero-carbon commitments. I think they need to be bolder than is outlined in this paper. And I hope that we will see that coming forward. I think the University of Winchester has shown the way on that. And we should be asking the University of Southampton to keep raising the bar. Thank you very much.
Councillor Godfrey.
If I may, I think councillor Weir makes a couple of good points about what this paper requires of the University of Southampton. And we must be very clear in the agreement exactly what it is that we are requiring. I don't make any apologies for being obsessed about money. It's the way I measure things. And it's not the merest, but that's where I am. We have, at the moment, no valuation report on which a decision cabinet can be made. The true value of a land with any constraints that exist, which can't be removed, and which we then want to add on to the agreement, are not understood by cabinet on basis of this report. I think that is a significant risk. We also had a long discussion about the consultation with the public and the potential for alternate schemes coming forward. Yet we want to make a decision on the basis of ignorance, of not knowing what those alternate schemes might be and their value to the City Councils of Winchester. I ask about the benefits that the paper refers to. But we don't know what those benefits might be. We certainly don't have a value of those benefits. And yet we're willing to make a decision to commit to a significant expenditure, three to five million pounds expenditure, on the basis of those benefits will come forward without saying to cabinet, this is the value of those benefits that we're going to receive. And we don't know those cost of constraints. I would want to know, I'd want cabinet to know the answer to some of those, a bit more detail before they go forward, whether it's next week or later, before they commit to entering into an agreement. Otherwise, the decision they make, proposed to be next week, is on the basis of incomplete information, which may be, there may be a safeguard, a backstop. But what is the decision they're making next week? It's a partial decision. It's an ill-informed decision. And we need to see before that cabinet receive the final set of papers and the briefings, additional information which fills in some of those gaps. I think we ought to bring that to the attention of cabinet. Thank you.
Any other debate? Councillor Hall.
Chair, just briefly, thank you, because I think there has been a very good session and it's been very helpful. Thank you to all the officers for allowing us to ask endless points of clarification and questions. I'm sorry, but the way this discussion is going sort of leads me to believe that we're heading for a period of confrontation rather than consensus around this. Because the only way to get your point over is to object again whenever those opportunities come up in the process that we need to go forward on. And I think that's personally a pity. And I'm not sure where learning all the lessons of past behaviours to try and avoid that. I, like councillor Godfrey, would have liked more clarity on the financials because obviously there are constraints that give us particular numbers this evening. But I accept entirely Mr Ferguson's point that we are having to pay for this site today and we'll do it ongoing. So there's a drain on resources if we don't then convert that into a positive position for us. And in my effort to advocate for the SPD process, I didn't, I wasn't indicating that it might take us two and a half or three years, which I think it did from the demise of the previous DA to the SPD. But I do think there are some lessons there that could be learned. Perhaps unlike other councillors, I think there is real value in how we approach that, that we could usefully use some of those techniques again. So Chair, I think, I appreciate that this has come to scrutiny this evening. I think it's absolutely the right place for the level of discussion that we've been able to have. And I hope councillor Leary and her cabinet colleagues will consider many of the comments we've all made in good faith tonight on how we think this might be enhanced as a paper. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson.
I think councillor Crass was before me, but are you sure? Are you doing? So I just wanted to make a few additional points. If I'm honest, as one of the board councillors where our PLC sits, I would have liked there to have been a greater opportunity at the outset when this option for the University of Southampton was coming forward, for residents to have been involved at a much earlier stage, to have found out about it, to have had a chance to assimilate it and perhaps to ask more questions around what that option, what that proposal might be. And also around the process that would have gone on to get to a point where a decision would be made. I accept it's a land disposal, so I accept that the council is doing what it's meant to do around not needing a full consultation, because at the moment, there isn't anything specific to consult on. I am pleased, seeing the heads of terms, that the skate park, the amount of objections, petitions, that the council did listen and it did respond. I do note in the report at the moment, in the heads of terms, that the clause relates to the state park hasn't yet been amended. So I'm looking forward, and I don't know whether that will actually happen before the paper comes to cabinet, but we will see that paragraph amended. So at the moment, it's in recommendation to be amended, but it hasn't yet been amended in the heads of terms. I do think there is still a need to bring people with us. I think there's a lot of concern amongst residents around what is actually happening and the debate that we've had tonight, and the need to clarify what appropriation, the covenant, what was agreed, what wasn't agreed, what can be done with the site, to show that people still aren't absolutely clear. And certainly for Ward councillor, I need to be absolutely convinced that residents will be included in the master planning process that the university is going to go through. We have a commitment from the University of Southampton that they will do that. But I will be holding them to account to make sure that residents are fully involved, because that's going to be paramount. And the other thing, we haven't touched on it tonight, but the planning process itself does offer some protections, because we do have various planning policies which do also set constraints on that side of what can and cannot be done. Councillor Weir has mentioned the carbon emergency and wanting the university to go sort of to the best standards of carbon neutrality with that site. And they have made a commitment around filling signs about what they're trying to achieve as a university around carbon neutrality. But equally, the issues around the permeability of the site, the additional benefits to the community, I want to make sure that all those things that they've said they will do, they actually fulfill and commit on those premises. And then, of course, we come to the appropriation of the land in due course. And again, it will be interested, hopefully by that stage, that the public will hopefully be on board with this proposal. They will see the wider benefits to the community. They will see the wider benefits to the city in terms of its benefits to the local economy, the opportunity for jobs, the opportunities for young people. They will see designs for a very great zero-carbon building, which has all of those things that they were hoping to find, that concert hall, places where they can sit, where they can read, places perhaps where they can display our own history. All of those things, because at that point, they'll know what they're getting. So I'm hoping and I trust that the cabinet are trying to make a decision in the best interest of the residents of Winchester and that it will come and be a good fruition for everybody. So as it stands, this paper, there is a need for clarity. I've read it several times. I will be reading it again before the cabinet meeting. But if we can get all those things right, then I hope this will be a true success. Thank you.
Councillor Graham-Moyston.
Thank you. And well, I'm not sure I want to follow that call there. So I just want to say that, you know, I feel like the point about consultation has been a little bit overblown. It seems to me that there has been consultation in the form of the work that was done on the vision of Winchester and the Northwood Park. So while it wasn't specifically on the particular piece of land, I think there has been consultation in terms of the principles of what people want and the values that are, I think, that people in Winchester and around would support. I'm also satisfied that it's been obvious for years that the site will become available. It's not suddenly just become, you know, available in the last year or two. Serious organisations that are looking to do things and to invest have people out there who are identifying sites well in advance and they're making the contact. So if there was an organisation out there that could put forward a better proposal, I feel sure they would have come forward. And I'm pleased around the clarification that Mr Hutchins gave that, you know, there is a mechanism where if an organisation or a set of people could come up with something significantly better value overall for Winchester, there is a mechanism to do that. So turning over to the specifics of the University of Southampton plan, it seems to me the vision of what they've described could be designed and architecture to be very much in sympathy with the area and enhance the area. Now, others have made the point that we need to hold them to that. But I do think that the amenities that have been proposed will enhance the city and the surrounding area. And I should say that as someone who had lived in Hare for nearly five years. So, you know, I loved having the Park Leisure Centre on my doorstep, but that time has passed and we need to have something else. So it's equally fantastic. And I think that an expansion of the campus would strengthen Winchester's credentials as a place of learning, where we've got, you know, the University of Winchester, we've got Peter Simmons College, both, you know, both strong sites of academic learning. And as councillor Leary referenced earlier on, there is also Worthy Down, which is also a place of learning, albeit perhaps a different set of community. But they start to feed in on each other. And, you know, if anyone's been to Silicon Valley, you will know that its success comes from having multiple organisations in close proximity. And they all feed off each other and all challenge each other. And you create the opportunity for an area to become a centre of excellence. So I think that could all feed on each other and actually create, establish Winchester as a really strong centre of learning. And of course, there'll be work opportunities. If you expand the campus, there'll be more jobs there of all sorts of levels, some academic, some practical. And I think there'll also be a younger demographic that will come in. And each of these things will add to the economic benefit to the district as a whole. People may be further out in the district, may have jobs there. Students will bring their student loans or their student, yeah, to the city and spend them on the high street. So I think there's some strong economic benefit there. So you won't be surprised if I, you know, wrap up by saying, I'm comfortable with the proposal. I know there's some risks. Nothing is risk-free. You have to get comfortable with the idea that, you know, there will be risks. And there is a possibility that, you know, we may look back and think, okay, that one didn't quite work out quite perfectly, but we got through it. And I think we should commend the officers and advisers for responding to the intense set of questions and the objections and coming back with some answers to those questions. And I would much rather support a step forward that takes us forward without any further delay and stops us doing the labour case and look at that as a reputation for.
Councillor Crass.
Thank you, Chair. I think I agree with pretty much everything that's been said in debate. So I'll try and be additive. I've just lost my page as well. So I think 15.2, 15.2 speaks to a milestone stages. I think what we're looking at is, I think what we've been focused on is the planning application. Let's take the point about the car may be expressed for economic value until we actually know what is proposed in detail in terms of that planning application. But what I would like to see, and I don't know that there is, maybe I've missed it, but I'd like to see a broader understanding and detailing of what is proposed that speaks to how many students, where they're going to be living, who's going to be building the accommodation, where that accommodation will be built, how that's going to be funded, and the impact analysis of the students in the city. The movement, or the impact on the movement strategy in terms of having so many students in the city, where the tutors and the lecturers are going to be parking, how they're going to get into and out of the city, looking for a spatial plan of Winchester city and how the university or the new art campus will fit into that. So I'm looking for an overall spatial plan for how the university or this development will fit in and how it will impact. And I'm hoping the university can help with that. I would imagine there's people in the university that can actually work with us. And that should be part of the deal, I would think, is that they help us develop Winchester to be a city that can sustain the growth that this development will bring. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Crass. Do we have any other debate?
No. So for me, I just wanted to say it has always felt uncomfortable that we didn't consult on this project. And just because you didn't have to doesn't mean you shouldn't. I mean, one of my biggest lotteries has always been just because you can doesn't mean you should. So to play that out in reverse, we shouldn't be consulting on projects just because we have to. We should be consulting on projects because we care what people think. We care about bringing them with us. We care about spending in public purse and we care about their thoughts on that. And I think it's a real shame that we've missed an opportunity here, taking on board councillor Leary. You don't know what questions were being asked, but not to go out sooner saying, what do residents want from this? Because in the same way as it was brought up during the debate, that businesses would have known that this would be, developers would have known that this was going for a long time, we also knew it was going for a long time. So we had plenty of time to genuinely go to residents and say, what would you like to see on this site? Here's our vision. How does it meet yours? And where can they meet in the middle to find the real, an even better scheme than perhaps the university can come up with on their own? Councillor Weir's point of joining the dots and working alongside residents, engaging with them. And I really appreciate you saying engaging with the wider district, although my view of people in Dernmead would be that they'd say, I have nothing to say on that. I'm just not happy that once again you're spending the money in Winchester. But absolutely worth a try. So I think we could have come up with an even better scheme had we taken that extra few weeks. If the Southampton University was committed, as it sounds like they are, with all the steps they're taking, that we've just heard to reassure us they're not going to walk away, perhaps then the extra six weeks for the consultation wouldn't have been a problem, as it was argued that it might be. So I think it's just a real shame that it's a real missed opportunity and that I think on this occasion, we've really let our residents down. Anyway, that said, coming back to the points we've made to give to cabinet. First of all, make clear in the report the necessary sequence of events. Correct paragraph 4.5 that the car park is not free. Amen to the report to give clearer summary of finances. Speak to the university regarding how they could engage proactively with Winchester residents and our district. Just imploring that the cabinet just make sure they've taken on board all of the comments we've had in appendix H. How can we hold University to Zero Carbon? And just was highlighting again this evening to the intention of cabinet the size of the decision based on so many unknowns. Was there anything else that I should add into that summary?
Sorry, I don't know what that last point you made.
Bring again to the intention of cabinet the size of this decision based on so many unknowns.
Is that summarising my points about having additional information about the finances? And I would welcome a little bit more on that point advised cabinet. I do think it's important that they do receive, explicitly receive additional information about the value of the benefits, the cost of the constraints.
Prior to a decision next week, also delay the decision.
I'm not sure what decision they'd be making if they didn't have it before that decision.
Chair, please.
Councillor Bell. I'm actually happy with the level of information. We've recognised the constraints we are imposing. We've recognised the existing constraints on the site. We have a broad brush estimate. I would not wish that to be added to our recommendation to cabinet.
Okay, so a show of hands, who would wish that to be added to our recommendation for cabinet? And who is against? Oh, look how that works out. That was surprising. Okay, are we happy that we leave in just brings the attention again to the point where I summarised the size of the decision based on so many unknowns? Yes? Sorry, councillor Godfrey. So there's the summary of that. So we have done as we were asked on this report. And the recommendation was that we come around the proposals. Subject final would be considered at cabinet meeting on the 9th of March. So thank you. We shall now move on to item number eight, Q3 financing performance monitoring. Please remember that we're chairing the performance panel. Oh, apologies. I haven't said my thank yous. Thank you, Matthew, for coming along this evening and bearing with us for so long. I understand how far you can be, so I thank you for your time.
No, 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 that can be ignored.
Well, thank you, Mrs Knight. Mrs Knight, don't walk away. I'm trying to thank you. I understand I'll give you from home, thank you, also for bearing with us this evening.
It is a pleasure. And I need to drive from home for the first day.
And Jaco online, thank you. And all lady in the room, much appreciated. Thank you, officers. Right. So the foremost panel met on the 24th February 2022 to scrutinise the attached report had 3339 and its associated sources. The members of the panel's meeting will be circulated to the scrutiny committee. Has that been done?
Has changed.
Yes. And will be included in appendix six. Perfect. Notes that, so the chairperson will provide us an update as usual. So I'll send it to you, councillor. Chair, thank you. Just literally a couple of very brief points. We met just a few short days ago. You have had the draft minutes through to this committee. So thank you to Mr Watson for his efforts on following that meeting. We've had the output as usual with the questions asked and the answers we've received already from officers. And indeed, that we have follow-up document when additional answers are received. So that process will be ongoing. Just two points have been noted really from that meeting on the 24th. We have the first two new project reports, which I think were very much welcomed by the panel. A lot of learning and the opportunity to understand the Derngate project, which obviously was very substantial, and also the waste contract. So I think as a panel, we recommend to you, the full committee, that we should continue with that process of those reports as they come forward, because they're hugely valuable to learn for future activities. The other rather larger point was that we feel that some of the indicators that we're looking at are difficult to produce. are difficult to produce. Sometimes they're not always in our ability to get the information, we're looking to other bodies. And we're questioning on some of that information, how actionable that is for us. Councillor Cutler, who sadly has departed, agreed that when the council refresh plan, sorry, council plan refresh comes forward this year, that we should look at the indicators that match the plan to see if they could be tidied up somewhat and provide a better level of clarity and usability. And that seemed to us to be a recommendation that we'd like to make to you at scrutiny, that that process should go forward this year when the refresh happens and that we then have perhaps a tighter set of indicators for analysis by the panel. So those are the two major points, Chair. The rest of the information is before everyone, for anyone to ask, raise any questions they may have. Tonight, but I thank fellow panel members and indeed officers for all the input that we had on the 24th. Thank you.
Thank you all for giving us such due diligence as well. I understand it was quite a long meeting because of some of the new things in there. So I really appreciate all of your time. I also appreciate Mr. Howson, you bearing with us for the past several hours whilst waiting to get to this part of the evening. And I hope that in speaking to you, you haven't already fallen asleep and just stayed online and I've put you on the spot. So thank you for being here. Right, does anybody have any questions for the team or someone else?
Madam Chair, I have to commend Mr. Watson on the detail of the minutes of the meeting. They are more detailed than any meeting I've been to in this council. And they are well-crafted record of, well, I presume of a well-crafted record of a meeting and easy to read. I assume that in the short time you've been meeting in this tonight, it hasn't been possible to abbreviate those. But it does raise a question of the effectiveness of the efforts that have just clearly gone into producing these minutes. Whether or not the officer should be looking at a recording, speech to text output or some other way of producing not nearly as good, but adequate minutes in the future, but it didn't clearly require as much effort.
Mr. Watson truly is a bit of a star. But I would say, Mr. Watson, are you happy to consider you to put into the effort in the minutes? Or would you prefer alternative means to be considered?
I'm very happy with the current arrangements, Chair, to be honest with you. We don't record the meeting for various reasons and I think that's probably, probably the best way to carry on for the time being anyway.
Mr. Cabinet? Yeah, Chair, thank you. I think Matthew just hit the nail on the head. This isn't one of our formal committee meetings where there's audio minutes of recording. And this is a panel that reports back into a scrutiny committee, so I think it's quite important for those notes to be quite thorough. And I just think if you did try to reduce them, I think you'd ask a million more questions because you'd be like, I'm not really sure where this has gone. So I think they are portionate for the purpose that scrutiny needs to have in front of them. And yes, Matthew does a fantastic job in doing those in quick time to get them on your agenda. Thank you, Chair.
So I would like to reiterate my thanks, Matthew, as always to you.
It's a pleasure.
And does anybody else have any other questions on this? No? So thank you all for your time in going through the Performance Panel documents. It is very much appreciated. Onto item nine on the agenda tonight, the change of membership of the Performance Panel. We have councillor Cromson, who has bravely replaced councillor Williams. So thank you for that noted by all of us. And we're all happy that we've read the Forward Key Plan and we are noting that on page 253 to 216. Agreed. Thank you. That concludes our board business evening. It's becoming habit that we work well into the night, so thank you for bearing with us and your engagement. The meetings are concluded at 22:26. Have a good evening.